Leading the low-impact development portion of the project. And then two other members who are of our primary team who are not with us this evening. One is Julie Brant, who's a surface water specialist, and she is supporting Paul. And then the other is Ben Burke, who is leading the best available science piece. As this first slide indicated, we're early in our process and coming together with council and the public. This is one of a number of opportunities that we'll be interacting with you in terms of our findings. Couple small things that we're working through now, just so everybody knows, last week in April, we're looking at conducting our field visit and recon. So that's something that we're going to be using that's going to be very instrumental in terms of how this, our study coalesces. The other piece of it will be the information and insight that you all have this evening that we're going to be using in terms of how that will inform our study when we move forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to Paul.
All right. Well, I think to start, there's a couple of definitions that are going to be useful to have a little bit of understanding as I go into some of these things a little bit deeper. So I'll start with the presumptive or demonstrative compliance. And what that means is, is that the way stormwater works is we call presumptive compliance, which means if I have a project, if I build something and build my stormwater facility according to the way I'm supposed to in the manual, then I'm presumptively going to, that means that we presume that I will be in compliance. I don't have any other demonstration of compliance other than I did it right in the first place. Demonstrative compliance is where I have something that's very specific that I'm going to build, and I can demonstrate and show you specifically how I'm in compliance, so that the water coming out of it has a very specific compliance measurement. The second thing I want to point out was what we call effective versus total impervious surface. And the pictures are an example of what those two are. The total impervious surface is the big parking lot on the, I guess, my right, on the right side. And that demonstrates that any water that falls on that parking lot is, and goes into a storm drain, is effective impervious surface. It is, it is connected to the drainage system. Where on the left, the trail kind of demonstrates ineffective impervious surface. It may be an impervious surface, but when water runs and falls on it and runs off, goes in the grass, infiltrates, and so on, it's not connected to a drainage system, so it's not effective impervious surface. So the difference between effective and total impervious surface matters in the things we're going to talk about. The next thing is, is what is a forest or what's forested? So is a forest a tree, or is it like above? Is it a forest really a collection of things that include trees and soil and an understory and an overstory? What is a forest? And another part about the forest that matters is intact. So it isn't one tree, another tree, another tree. It's how big a collection of trees you need in one place to be considered something that would perform or behave as a forest. And when I talk about these things, everything is in a context of hydrology. And hydrology is the science of rain falls out of the sky and all the water goes somewhere, goes into the ground, it runs off into the streams, it evaporates back in the air. The next thing is what is low-impact development, or LID? This is a different type of LID than what we were talking about earlier. Low-impact development is basically a set of measures, or suite of measures, that are intended to control stormwater very close to the source at where they're generated. So we try to put things near where the pavement is. We try to collect stormwater and not just have it run off instead of going into the ground, or we try to reintroduce it into the ground. There's a lot of things that are, that are, have been or can be included in what is low-impact design or LID. So there's a couple of important understandings or things to understand about, about LID and what it's intended to do. This is a quote from the Phase 1 permit. The Phase 1 permit is a permit that all the large communities have. The small communities like Bothell, who's a Phase 2 community, has the same definitions and so on. But I want to point out the things that are said in orange, and that is, is that LID, and application of LID, is intended to mimic predisturbance hydrologic processes of infiltration, filtration, storage, evaporation, and transpiration. So the idea is, is that LID system is supposed to make the land respond to rainfall as if it were a forest. So there's another distinction, and that is, is what is an LID best management practice? So I should say what a best management practice is, is that a series of measures like stormwater ponds and detention facilities and swales, that are things that stormwater scientists and stormwater engineers apply to sites in order to control stormwater. They're called best management practices. So when we talk about an LID best management practice, it's one of those practices that is, that performs in the way that LID works, mainly, as I show in the orange again, emphasize predisturbed hydrologic processes. The idea is, we're trying to mimic how the land responds to rainfall if it were undisturbed, if it were still a forest. So the next thing, the last thing I want to define are, are what are included in LID BMPs. And this matters because depending where you are in the country, even what city you are in Puget Sound, there are different definitions of what is included in B, LID, and what's not included. And here's a list of the kinds of things that are included, and we'll talk a little bit more about them in a minute. So we're talking about what is the best available science in watershed planning? And I, if you're familiar with this, with this project at all, you'll understand what a lot of these numbers mean, but I'll try to go through them real briefly, but at least completely enough so that everyone can understand what we mean. And these are the results of a number of different either studies that have been done or that are commonly understood in the Puget Sound area in the western Washington, or things that are still ongoing, that are explaining what is the effect of development on watersheds, and what's the effect of development on streams. So the first one is the 1065 guideline, which is something King County has used. And that is, refers to 10, a watershed that is 10% impervious and 65% forest is considered to be still potentially reasonably healthy watershed. The streams within that watershed are considered healthy. And so they use that as a, as a land use guideline. The next one, 101575, refers to 10% impervious, 15% grass, and 75% forest. And these are the standards of the, the conditions in the watershed that were included in the Des Moines Creek Basin Plan, which is one of the few, if only, basin plans that are approved by, had been approved by ecology. And the third one is called the 8% target, which was done by, in Waneta Creek, by King County and Kirkland. And that refers to their evaluation of just trying to establish an appropriate hydrologic regime or hydrology in a basin in order to maintain a targeted need or a targeted desire. So I want to go back through and note, and you'll notice that each one of these was in that, in the subheading below each of the three things I talked about, that describes how those things were developed. And they were all developed using different approaches. They all arrived at using different considerations and different things. So the 1065 was based on, it looked at a bunch of watersheds that were already developed and said, well, what's the point at which a watershed's considered degraded? And they said, well, if it's more than 10% impervious, or more than 65% of the forest is disturbed, it tends to be degraded. 101575 in Des Moines Creek was based on, we looked at the stream and said, what, what makes an unstable stream? And we said that if we have a development in a watershed that meets the 101575, it's a stable stream. If it's more than that, more developed than that, it is not a stable stream. The 8% target is relating, is a new thing, a fairly new thing, that's relating the amount of development that's occurred in a watershed related to a specific stream health metric. And the specific stream health metric is frankly, it's a bug. It's bugs, a collection of bugs. And the idea is, is that if a stream changes enough, the bugs will be affected and it'll be considered biologically an unhealthy stream. So there's a, the next thing I'd point out is the LID manual adoption and the MPDS permit. And what that, what those are, you remember I mentioned presumption? And that is, is that if I apply, if I have a manual and I apply a manual to a development site, I can be considered to be in compliance. So ecology considers that the adoption of an LID manual, and their stormwater manual, and their NPDS permit, the permit that the city holds, that if they're following those, they are presumptively complying with stormwater management, and that is considered, I'm transferring the words, it's considered best available science, but in the stormwater world, we use different words. We use word called A-CART, which is all known available reasonable technology, or we use a term called maximum extent practicable, or we, we use a term reasonable, reasonable assurance. So there's different terms, and they all kind of mean about the same thing as best available science. But anyway, that is the way stormwater managers apply their standards to development to, in order to be in compliance. There's a couple of other things that are going on right now. One of the things is called Building Cities in the Rain, which is a program the mayor's very familiar with. And it has to do with the Department of Commerce evaluating the potential conflict between growth management and stormwater standards. The idea that maybe the two applied together don't necessarily fit very well. So there is still work going on, they're still doing some studies. And the last thing I want to point out is, is that the NPDS permits are requiring the Phase 1 communities, and the Phase 1 communities are Seattle, Tacoma, Snohomish County, King County, Pierce County, and Clark County. They're all required to be doing watershed planning, which is continuing to get at this question about what kind of hydrologic effects are negative, and what kind of hydrologic, hydrologic effects should we control development to. So I wanted to go in a little bit more detail, because this really starts to get into, and I'm not going to kill you with trying to explain what this chart means, but the, the idea is, is that this is really what's getting at, where is the science on low-impact design and its effect on watersheds? And I would just point out a couple of things on this chart. So if you start on the top of the chart, you go down to the red, second red line that says ECY 8%. That's what's called an ecology 8% standard, doesn't matter what that means. It just means that, that is the performance measurement that low-impact design is expected to provide. And it's a very high standard. So this bar chart is representing what are called BIBI scores, which are, again, it's bug counts. But the idea, and, but it represents stream health. So the higher you are in the chart, the more healthy the stream is, the lower you are in the chart, the unhealthier the stream is. So the idea is, is that you can see, since a forested, of course, you would expect to be the highest health, because it's unaffected. The next standard is ecology standard for low-impact design, and that is still considered reasonably healthy stream. As you continue down the chart, you see where the 6510 rule falls in, in, as far as stream health. And then you also see LID 80%. Those are really important to understand, and the next thing I'm going to talk about, and that is, is saying that they are still in the reasonable middle, middle and healthy range of a stream, but they are not the same as the ecology ECY 8, and they are reasonably around the LID 80% standard, which I'll explain in a little bit. I, I'm not going to spend time to talk about a little bit more of the words on the other side, but just kind of following the ideas, is that hydrology, as it's connected to stream health with LID standard, tends to be good. 6510 tends to be good. Other standards tend to be not so good. So the real question that we're asking here is, is that is LID equivalent to a forest? And remember, earlier on, we were talking about the idea that the intent of LID is to mimic forest hydrologic processes? So the question is, is that do, how, not so much how well do they do, but is that a reasonable consideration to make, that LID and forests perform about the same hydrologically? So, and the things that are, it's performing, meaning like, does it infiltrate, does a LID infiltrate like a forest? Does it intercept water like a forest? Does the runoff from the site, is it equivalent to the way a forest performs? So this is the question that we're really asking as far as best available science in this area, is, is that what's the equivalence, relative equivalence between forest retention and the application of low-impact design? So the short answer is, it depends. So I, there are certain LID measures, like bio-retention, which is basically small areas where you push, put water into and they infiltrate into the ground, and they don't have any discharge, or have minimal discharge. Rain gardens are kind of the same thing, just generally a kind of semantic and maybe a different set of, sense of scale. Dispersion is another thing, and that is, when, if you remember back to the picture I showed of the trail, water runs off the trail, goes into the grass, it doesn't run off, it doesn't collect, that's dispersion. All those LID measures are, can be reasonably expected to be equivalent in performance hydrologically to a forest. You can argue a lot of detail around that and so on, but the concepts are, that I've kind of tried to create a pathway to showing how there's a, an understanding, a recognition in the field that LID is equivalent to, hydrologically is equivalent to a forest. And we're just talking about hydrology. There are a number of other LID measures that were on the list that I showed you, that I would say are not necessarily equivalent to a forest. Permoveable pavements, downspout controls, soil quality, vegetated groves, water reuse. So I was debating and, and helping, you know, as we walk through this, this is, we're almost to the last slide here, is just trying to say, well, I talked about a lot of basic concepts, but then how does this translate into something you apply day to day? How does this really go ahead, and how do you apply it into the Fitzgerald area? And this is where I think I should probably stop. Because this is, this is, there's a, I could explain kind of what this means, but this is kind of, this, these are the steps and the concepts, I think, the working concepts that we'll be going through to demonstrate how the idea of LID is equivalent to a forest, what kind of LID is equivalent to forest, what does equivalence to forest mean, what guideline to use, what's an appropriate guideline to establish, to apply standards to. This is sort of the process that we would intend to go through. So that's all I, all I was intending to talk about. I can answer questions, so I hope.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. Do we have questions from council members? I don't like going first, though. Oh, here we go. There was a brave one.
Can you put up the slide where it has the little bar graph?
Yeah.
So you said that LID is equivalent to a forest in those three examples. But when I look at your, your graph, LID 80%, that line is well below forest and ecology 8%, whatever that is. So how is it that those two lines don't, aren't on top of each other, but are considered equiv, the, the two are considered equivalent?
So, it's a good question. So the ecology 8% is actually the way that, if you were to carefully evaluate how an LID system works, it is really working within, with a performance measure, which is that ecology 8%. And what it, what the ecology 8% means is, is that it's basically the same volume of water that's leaving a site before development leaves the site after development. And there's, and there's a point in the hydrology where it's, it's the, the eight, basically 8% of the water is, it's a, it's a cutoff point, it's a modeling exercise. So the ecology 8% is actually representing the LID hydrologic performance. The LID 80% was a, a measure that was, I'll go back here. The LID 80% was something that was done in the Waneta Creek Plan that said only 80% of the watershed was going to be retrofit with LID. So it meant that 20% was not going to be. So that's why it's, again, it's on here, is, is that the LID 80% is not 100% LID of all the development in the Waneta Creek watershed, which is why it's lower than that. The ecology 8% is considered to be, if you can't do LID, and you have, you're supposed to do, meet an LID performance, you have to meet the 8% standard. So that's where the equivalence comes between LID and the 8% standard.
Okay.
Did that help?
A little bit. So that LID 80% line, which is far below the forested, really refers to, you said the Waneta Creek watershed, where only 80% of the development was going to be assumed to be retrofitted to LID standards?
Yes.
So 20% of that watershed would remain unretrofitted?
Yes.
And so even with, with just 20% unretrofitted remaining, you get a pretty significant drop from the forested condition?
I wouldn't apply too much significance to the, the absolute, miss of the numbers, but they are different. I mean, it does, it's, it is a, a subjective measure as far as high quality, medium quality, low quality. It is different.
Okay. So it's not, you don't, you shouldn't interpret it as a linear scale necessarily.
It is linear in the numbers that are provided, but not necessarily limited, linear in the, what it's representing. It may not be a linear graph.
Gotcha. And then what you're talking about in terms of low-impact development is not just in application to the Fitzgerald area. This is what we're applying citywide. Is that correct? Aren't we doing that as a part of our, our required LID implementation?
So you will be, you, right now, you're in a process where you are removing barriers to low-impact design in your codes, and they have to be adopted by the end of the year. So, and then, I don't know where you are in the rest of your application of, you know, like where you are in your manual and adoption and manual and so on to specifically require. So right now, you're required to use LID where feasible. The next thing is remove the barriers to applying LID. The next step will be to, LID will be part of your stormwater manual.
And then can you put the last slide up, please?
Mm-hmm. This one?
Yes. So you said you didn't, I, I'm trying to make that leap of, you know, how you've provided these definitions and these standards. I'm trying to make that leap to what that's going to look like in the Fitzgerald area. And I see your slide here. So, so am I to look at that and, and conclude that what you're, what you're moving towards, or maybe you're not moving towards anything, is when it says, LID total impervious area to 10% allowable and 35%?
Yeah.
What does that mean?
So what that means is, is that if the, if the 1065 guideline is the one that's chosen, that means you do get to have 10% impervious surface. So that's the way that it's been modeled and where the hydrology works. So that would be 10, 10% effective impervious area. So what that means is, is that what LID really does is it turns total impervious area in some into ineffective impervious area. So, which, but it, and because of the 10% part of it, you don't have to turn all of it into ineffective impervious. So like, if you have 40, 40% impervious, and you can LID 30% of it away and leave 10, then make 30% ineffective, then you're still meeting the 10% allowable with a 10% acceptable. So the idea is, is that take the total impervious area and reduce it to 10% in the 35%. But then the other part, in the 65%, we have to reduce it to zero, basically. We have to make them completely equivalent.
And question for staff. That seems different than what is, which was in that ordinance that was ruled, ruled incorrect or whatever, what am I saying? For the, by the Growth Management Hearings Board? That, that seems different than ordinance, what the old ordinance, 2163?
Yeah, it was different in 2163.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, it was different in 2163. And basically what we've done, we've reverted back to 18, no, I'm sorry, 1988, which is a little bit different in and of itself, too. So this is kind of a new approach that we're going to be looking at.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Okay, I'll go. Do we have the bug scores or the Bethic index scores for the two creeks that go through this subarea? Have you guys looked at those?
I have not.
Okay. Do we have scores for them, staff?
You know, we'll have, we'll have to look at that. I know that Ben Burke, the primary biologist, wasn't able to be here tonight. I know he's got a bunch of that kind of data, so that'll be one of the things we're going to be adding to this information, if we have it.
Okay. So we might have them as, over the years, but we don't know for sure.
We may, we may have it. We probably don't have measurements over the years. We probably have one or two spot areas.
So just for a little background, I don't know, I'm sure you've discussed this with staff, but one of the things that, the issue really with, with this area, at least one of them, is that we've had this low-impact development overlay. And it was a special overlay, it was just as part of our city, and it was unlike any other in the region. And what it's caused is basically an inability for, for potential developers to look at the land. These are all developable properties, basically. I mean, there's critical areas on them and everything else, but that aside, they're developable. And the LID overlay's been really hard to predict what they're getting into, if they're going to make a profit, if they can get, build enough houses, that type of thing. So am I understanding correctly that you guys are looking to do another LID overlay that's, is unique to this part of the city with this study? Or are you guys looking to potentially at the, the citywide low-impact development requirements and seeing if that is sufficient to make these streams healthy while it's developable?
I would, I would say, right now, it would be the latter. And that is, is that the application of LID, while maybe narrow, more narrowly defined, make sure that there's an equivalence, that the application of LID is equivalent to the forest. And so it's not any different than you would be applying anywhere else in the city.
Okay.
Just more, more narrowed, focused.
So my next question is, do we know about the soils, or is that the, the guy that's not here that has the information on the soils in this area?
No, I, that would, that would be part of what will be, would be involved in whether or not one could do that.
We have some preliminary geotechnical information, but it's not, you know, comprehensive of the whole area. So I think that's something that we're going to be looking into deeper as well, you know.
What's it looking like from what you've seen, or do you not know? I mean, you have some, but have you guys looked at it? You know what the soils are like?
I haven't looked at it in detail, but I think the way, I think, you know, that is, one of the important parts of the detail in here is, is that, and it probably leads to the same question that you're, that you've had before, and that is, is that what amount of area do you need to LID, to have for LID in order to make the development get down to zero? So, meaning that if you have poor soils, you would need to have, either have less impervious area to infiltrate into it, or change the amount of, or add to the area that you need to infiltrate. I think I just said the same thing twice. But basically, the, that, that, that idea is, is that you can't do 64% of the 65% in LID at all in 1%. And so that, that percentage of land that you need in order to LID will vary a lot based on the soils. So that's, that's going to, what I'm getting at, is, is that it's hard to make that, that, have that deeper understanding about that in the specific area yet.
Okay. Because for, for me at least, when it comes to the, because we have two options for the, the citywide low-impact development requirements. It's the, the list or using the performance standard, which is the range of storm events from 8% of the two-year through half the two-year, which I'm sure that everybody understands what that means, but...
But he said 8%.
Right. 8%. There we go. I should have just said 8%. If we just required that in this area, is that something you're looking at and saying you don't do the list approach in this area? You just have to model and demonstrate that you're meeting the 8% through the 50-year storm event?
Well, that's why I brought up presumption versus demonstrative, is, is that the idea is, is that I think ideally, because stormwater actually, I think, works the best if you're in a, stay in a presumptive area, in this presumptive state, is, is that it would be presumptive, meaning that you'll apply the LID and we'll assume that it'll work, that it'll, you'll presume that it'll work. I think, I, I would suggest that there's, it's probably as hard to predict what the 8% would do as it would be like how feasible the LID is across the, across the area, across the basin. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, is that I would, I, I think this is going to go down the line of being presumptive, and that it would not be, we would not be expecting to demonstrate the 8%.
Yeah, because the city would have to demonstrate. I mean, we wouldn't hold the developer accountable and have them come back and re-engineer, retrofit the development they built. It would be the city that would have to go back if we went demonstrative or demonstrative.
Yeah. But I, I think that if the, I mean, just like, the reason 8% is there is, is that if for some reason there's some issues around LID, or that the developer needs another approach, their way to demonstrate how LID should be performing is to use the 8%. So that the idea is, is that if they can't make the other part work, then as long as they can make the 8% work, they can develop.
Have you guys looked at the zoning, changing the zoning in your, I guess, let me take one step back. Are you guys going to do scenarios with modeling?
Was not, we were not planning to.
Okay. Because one of the things about the, the, we had an ordinance that was contested and it was repealed, is, and I think the, the rub is that we had, we had a road that provided transportation through this area, and also impacted property owners. We also have... We also have environmentally, you know, important habitat and, and sensitive areas in this area. And to accommodate that road going through there, we raised the zoning in this area to compensate for the, the, the road being taken out and then having the LID overlay. And so it went to, from R40,000 to 5400A, I think it is? Is it A? Okay. And the, cause we have different zones in this area, and the, the real, the part that people are upset about is, is there, it's called Zone 1, which is kind of the eastern border of it, it's up on the hillside. And that's kind of one of my questions, too, is are you guys looking at different zones? Or is it, you're looking at the whole Fitzgerald area as one study area? Will we bring it back to zones, Mr. Blackburn?
Well, I guess I would pose that question to the council. I was not sure that that was an approach we were gonna take. Is that something the council's looking at? Asking us to investigate?
I mean, I can speak for myself. I've gotten a lot of feedback from people in this area, and the people that want zone, or they don't want probably the zoning changed, but they want the LID overlay to go away, is what was referred to as Zone 1, which is the east side of it. And I've heard actually equal amount of people, believe it or not, from the other parts of the area, that don't want anything to go away. They like it the way it is, they don't want it to develop, they're more than happy with it, with the restrictive development regulations, basically. So, um, maybe that'll help us get out of this situation, is if we actually don't take it as one big study area, but we look at the, we bring back the zones from whatever study it was that zones were involved, cause it's not in our code.
Right.
And, and to me, it seems like in the, in that area, the, the art, the area that Zone 1, which is now Zone 5400A, we don't have transportation to get people in and out of there at that density. So I, I would encourage you guys to look at different zoning for that area. If, it's, because it doesn't make sense to me that we would have 5400A, take out all the LID regulations and the transportation out of the area. And that's part of why I didn't support the ordinance when it came forward the first time that then fell apart at the state hearing board, so.
So, so may I ask a follow-up question?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, thank you. So, the idea was you would be changing the zoning by making it less dense? Is that kind of what your thought process?
Yeah. Yeah, cause I, I think you can accommodate low-impact development, you can meet the LID performance standard if you had a lower zoning for Zone 1.
And it would only be Zone 1, you'd, the, the eastern part of the area you'd wanna change, you wouldn't wanna change? Cause it, to the west, it's, you've got an R40,000 designation between North Creek and 35th Avenue, and then it goes 9600 between 35th Avenue and approximately 39th Avenue.
Right.
And so that would, I, I'm sorry, we, we can talk about this more later.
Yeah, I, I just, I've heard from the people in the other zones, other than the R5400A, that they don't want anything to change. I haven't heard one person out of, I mean, hopefully, they come forward now, but I haven't heard anybody outside of that Zone 1 that wants anything to change with the code.
Okay.
And that, that I don't, I don't agree with keeping a special LID overlay for this area of the city versus the other parts of the city. I think that's what's, that's the crux of the issue with, with the property owners, that we've, you know, we've, we've been told that we've had a, um, a moratorium, basically, zoning moratorium, in, in a sense, because people can't figure out how much their, or developers can't figure out if it'll pencil for them to develop the land. So, um, and it only applies to this one portion of the entire area.
Yeah, that's correct, yes, yes. Okay.
Let's see. So you mentioned forest area, so in our, in our code, we have a percentage forest area. Are you going to look at the areas that are forested now? Cause they're, that was one of the things about the LID overlay, that if you had a property that, let's say it only had 10% forest now, we had to bring it up to and like literally plant hundreds of trees on your property to have the percentage of forest based on the zoning. Are you guys looking at the forest there now and trying to give us an assessment of like, what? Cause we don't really even know what's there now.
So, there, I flipped up another slide that really kind of gets at some of those questions that you've just been asking.
Oh, good, alright.
And, um, and one of them is, is that what's current condition of the watershed, and are the percentages applied to the watershed? So that I was talking about in terms of the watershed, but the other one is, is that looking at the question of, if we're talking about 65%, right now it's only 10%, then how do we resolve that? How do we approach that issue in the standards in this watershed? So that's, those are questions that we're still, we're still working on. And the other is, are things like development transfers and, um, and then they'll, you were asking the question about, well, we upzoned it, and then they figured out maybe they couldn't do that anyway. And that last question is, can LID match the density? So, you, you-
We're on the same page.
Yeah, you've identified a bunch of the questions that we're, we're kind of, uh, we know that are gonna be next part of what we're gonna be working on.
And so, as part of this discussion, this is probably for you, Bruce, are we gonna discuss the facilitated discussion? Is that part of this presentation, or do you guys just wanna talk about the best available science?
Yeah, the idea was to kind of talk about best available science and get some input from the council on some of the things. And actually, we've heard quite a few pretty interesting things here, so I'm happy that we can talk about the, the process if you'd like to. We can update you if you'd like.
Well, I'm gonna do my last bomb, and then I'll hand over the microphone. And that's that, we've gotten a lot of feedback from people that some people shouldn't be invited, and I don't want so-and-so to be there, and I think so-and-so should be there, and stuff like that. And, you know, to be honest with you, it's a $15,000 expense to the city that we added to try to make it more of a, a process where people could come to truce with each other. And we can't, I don't know if we can get people to the table together. So I, I'm not overly enthusiastic about the responses that I have heard from the public about doing the facilitated process. And to me, it's, it's like, fine, then we'll just make the decision, and this is the bomb. The decision in my mind, without the science, would be 9600 with the LID performance, LID performance standard. Done. And let's let the fur fly. So I'll hand it over after that to somebody else. If I had to make the decision on my own, so.
Any thoughts on that?
Can LID match density? Can we do transfers? It's these questions here that we're working on next.
What's your feeling, uh, I don't know if I can ask this question. What's your feeling on the potential success of facilitation?
I'm gonna let Tom answer that one.
Well, I, I think we're, we're seeking your direction on facilitation. We, we're ready, we're really, ready to write a contract for a facilitator and begin that process. So if you wanna stop it, this is, this is the time to do it. Uh, if you want us to go ahead, we're, we're ready and set, ready to go ahead with it. I, you know, I, I think it's going to produce valuable information, but, but it's really city council that needs to weigh in on whether that information is going to be useful in your decision-making process.
I'm willing to support the mayor. I, the only question that I have is, is 9600 lifting that with the LID lifted? Is that what you said?
Well, it's, so the LID performance standard is a, it's a, it's a technique you use to design your stormwater system. And it is, it is very restrictive if there's not good soils, so that's why I asked that. It work, if the soils are okay. But if, if soils aren't okay, then your development potential would be significantly impacted. So that's why the study, for me, that's the study. Like, can, can we just make this area have the same LID requirements as there typically are in the Peachtree Town area? And can we do that and still have healthy streams? And, cause we do have two really healthy streams, that's why I wanted the BIBI scores. I've looked at the data set, they didn't have BIBI, but we have a service water report out there that staff have produced, and those are their best and healthiest streams in this entire city. So, uh, it's not something I take lightly to say, oh, yeah, go ahead and develop it and take the protections off and kill the last two streams, cause then we'll be going back there 20 years from now and trying to fix them. So, sorry. Did that answer your question?
Yeah. I, well, so I guess, uh, I guess I just would wanna know what the impact of, of what you're suggesting would have on the health of the area. And if it, and if we can separate out Zone 1, what that impact would be as well.
Well, the short answer on the storm, on the stormwater side, on the LID side, is, is that with the 8% standard, it, 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 I think that's an effective standard, and it's a very difficult standard to meet. And so that'll translate back into how developable a piece of land is. So meaning that more and more and more of the land would become part of the stormwater management system and less developed. So there's an intersection point between, you know, the, how much you can develop, and then how much land you need for stormwater if you have really poor, poor soils. So that, that, so that's still kind of the, raise the question of, is there any, any, is it raising, um, raising that, lifting that curtain, I guess, of uncertainty around development on there?
So, uh, clarifying question. My understanding is that we have to have LID across the whole city at this point, anyway. So we can't really lift that off of that area, anyway, correct?
That's cool.
So the LID, LID is what it is everywhere. I mean, it should be by the end of this year.
That's right. Well, yes, and, yes, and-
Sorry, I'm gonna help out a little bit here. It's, it's incorrect, so the LID overlay we have there now has nothing to do with the LID requirements and regulations that are coming down the line at the end of this year. So it's totally different. Okay.
That being said, if we lift the old LID, the new LID will still apply. Okay. So I guess, I, the only question I have is, is 9600 going to, um, meet that standard? Will that suffice to meet the, the new LID standard?
It's, what, what it translates back into is, is that the standard is the standard, and so that, the, whoever's designing and developing it has to figure out how to meet the standard.
So it's not your problem?
No, and, and it's, and it's more that the idea is, it just, that that establishes whatever the standard is. So no matter how much development is, that standard is what ultimately will, and, and their ability to meet the standard is what matters. So the standard's the same, no matter what the amount of development is.
So I guess, you know, I've had the same, I've heard the same comments from one side, that they're not interested in, in being in a facilitation with another, um, another member. And, uh, you know, if, if they can't play nice and talk together, then I'm, I don't feel like wasting $15,000. We can give it to the fire department.
Yeah. My heart is about to jump out of my stomach, it's pumping so hard, I can't believe it. The 180% reversal the two of you just done is unfathomable. My issue is, as you sit up here, you're supposed to stay by your word. And I heard you say to the very people that are sitting here, that are listening to their property values continue to be taken away for years on end, that you'd be willing to work together. And now, based upon one comment, you wanna take back your word. That is unfathomable, literally. I wish somebody could take my pulse, maybe the two of you can. This is private property. This is people's livelihoods we're talking about here. It's a big deal. And to put out there that, at the beginning, the first vote that you took, under the guidance of one of your political contributors, to reverse- I'm not out of order.
You don't need to bring in political issues to this meeting.
Your decision process has been highly impacted by that.
That's your assumption.
You're out of order? Do not speak to that.
Are we just having a free talk now?
No, we're not.
Okay, good. So-
You're getting out of order. Go ahead.
I think out of order is when you say that we're gonna have a facilitated discussion, and then because somebody sends an email saying they wanna have a different way that things are talked about, because somebody appealed their decision, or the decision, that you're now gonna take that opportunity away is highly un, unfortunate. My hope is you, as the mayor, and taking some leadership opportunities, to say, you know what? There's a lot of passion on both sides, there's disagreement, but I think that we can bring people together. That's what I hope you would do, right now. That's your opportunity, to say, you know what? There's passions on both sides, understand both sides may not wanna talk to each other, but let's have a facilitator come in and work together. For us to just take this back into our own hands, I think, is completely different than- Councilmember Sandberg, I appreciated where you were at the beginning of the year, and I hope you're still there today, that you're willing to work with the people that are standing back here, the promises that you made. I am holding to your words. And, um, so my passion and my call is to you, to stand by that, and I hope that you will. So, I appreciate you bringing some information forward here. A lot of history goes 10 years of working with the, these property owners. And so I'm hoping that with this best available science, you can help with a facilitator to bring us together to a reasonable solution. Anyone else?
It's, wow. If we had not withdrawn our appeal, we'd probably have a decision by now. And we wouldn't need a facilitator, and it would just be a fact. And, um, the, and that was $100,000 wasted. The, and now we're debating whether we wanna spend, you know, it's brought up, well, maybe I don't wanna spend 15, an additional $15,000. We made a promise to go through this process, to get the best available science done, to have a facilitator for these people. And, um, and, dang it, we got, we gotta be, you know, individuals of our word. We promised these people we'd do that. That's up to us to hold, to be accountable for what we said we would do. So, we're, we're gonna go through this process, we're gonna get the best available science, and we're, we're gonna have a facilitated process, and we're gonna come to a middle ground. Because we told both sides that's what we were gonna do. It, um, it's the right thing, and it's the responsible thing. Because I think in the long run, this process, we haven't been responsible to this process. We wasted $100,000 and got nothing for it. Shame on us. I don't know. Director Landhart, $100,000 fill a lot of potholes, wouldn't it? We'll never fill a pothole with it. I want, I hope that, um, you gentlemen, your, your company will have an emphasis on the Zone 1 of the Fitzgerald Subarea. They're, they're, they're the, they're the people that are, you know, we're, we're trying to work with. It's, it's those folks. I, I want an emphasis up there, and for those that don't want change, I'm willing to not give them change. But there's people up there that want change, and so let's look, look at that. They've been the most impacted through this whole process because of, um, potential roadway going through, and then the, the LID that we put on there, more restrictive than any other place in the city. As it's been termed, an experiment that didn't work well, and we tried to right the wrong and had an appeal, and we never followed through on, uh, an appeal to the Growth Management Hearings Board. And, uh, we appealed that decision, and we never got to find out whether we, we're doing the right thing or not. So, um, I want to, and we need to, to be individuals of our word, follow through with what we said we would do. And, uh, and that is, continue on with the study. Have the mediated process, the facilitated process, to come to reasonable ground that is, um, accepted by both sides. And typically, in my experience, when nobody's happy, it's probably the middle ground. Because when, when nobody gets everything they want, it's probably the middle ground. They get, they win some and they lose some. And, and that's probably where we're gonna be here. But, gosh dang it. We, we gave our word, and we, as a council, we better stand up and keep our word.
It's not emotional, is it? Not much. I, I think, I think the people that live in Zone 1 have been putting up with something that may be wrong, may be right. We'll never know till we get all the data. But I think it is up to us to get the information, to look at the information, compile the information, to ask if everybody wants to get together and talk about it. If, if one side doesn't show up, so be it. One side doesn't show up, that will tell me a lot. I don't care what your political affiliations are. We're here for those people out there. That should be one of our goals. We're here for those people, we're here to try to make Bothell a better place. We're here not to destroy two streams. That's gonna be kinda tough, isn't it? But I think all the data that's gonna be compiled will give us a lot of the information that we need to make a good decision. I think we need to emphasize Zone 1 in this study, and take a look specifically at that data. Because that'll tell us a lot. But I think we need to move forward. I think we need to move forward for the citizens, and we need to move forward for us as a city.
Passion. Wow. Well, I came to this study session, and thank you for your presentation, by the way, but I came here to learn some more information that I didn't already know, which you guys educated us a little bit on the processes, on how you come up with stuff. But I'm looking at a schedule in our agenda packet that, quite frankly, doesn't get us anywhere until October or November for any decisions to be made. So, so to me, I'm a little frustrated that it's taking so long, that we don't have more than what we learned today. And that's not your fault, I'm just saying, I want information. I want to obtain this information so that when I'm talking to people, I have an understanding of what's actually out there and what we can and cannot do. I understand Councilmember Fareed's passion about getting together, not getting together, Councilmember Spivey, but the bottom line for, for, for me, as a council member, is I did tell the people, I did make a promise to do something and I want to be able to do it, but I don't have any information today that I couldn't have went and looked up myself. So, I need information, I want to help people get to the end result, but the only way to do that is to have information. And I don't, I don't have anything today further than what I could've had. So, thank you.
So, I'm looking at the schedule and I appreciate staff putting together a really detailed schedule. I think there's a lot of information there, a lot of steps that I would like us to see, I would like to see us complete. And I'm, I'm not really sure when people say they want to see special emphasis on Zone One. I mean, when we talk about a watershed, every part of the watershed impacts the quality of, of the stream. So, I don't know what it means to give special emphasis, for example, on Zone One. So, I think we should be looking at it, at the approach, the watershed approach that, that I thought we were doing. I, I would like us to do the, the engagement process and, like you said, if people want to come, they can come. And if they don't want to come, then their voices aren't heard at that level and that would be unfortunate. I'm really looking forward to the best available science because I think that's what we were originally coming into this process is saying, okay, this, there was a decision made that we were gonna let best available science guide the process. So, that decision was made and I think we need to be consistent with that. And when I look at the schedule, we will come to a decision, if we stay on track, we will come to a decision about any code changes for the Fitzgerald area in July, so before our August break. So, they will have, the, the property owners in that area, if we follow this schedule, will have certainty, presuming that nothing gets appealed. They, and the whole process of the, the, the discussion process ahead of time is to make sure that we get to a product that, that will withstand appeal. But we, they will have certainty in, in July and that's what I'm aiming for. And I, I think, I think, I think we can do this. And so, that's, I'm gonna support this process. And yes, there is an October and November final action date, but that's when we adopt all of the comprehensive plan changes for the year. And so, I think if we, if we dedicate ourselves and make sure that we don't extend beyond July 26th, if that means extra meetings, then I think that we can stay true to the promises we've made and give them some certainty in a reasonable amount of time.
Does anybody else want to do a second round or are we good? We're good? Okay. Do you feel like you got, what you needed?
Actually...
More?
Actually, well, yeah, more too, but I think actually this was really informative for all of us here. And we got some pretty good data, we're gonna go back and start pulling out and getting together for the facilitated process, which still appears to be on. And that'll be a really important process from our standpoint because that'll be where we try and integrate the science with the public policy, with the land use codes and things like that, which is always a very influencing, complex process, to say the least. So, thank you very much. Do you, anybody have anything more to add up here?
Appreciate your time.
So, I did have just one last thing to add to this conversation is that bringing up not doing the facilitated process was not because I didn't want to, we didn't want to hold up to our word. It was just in response to the property owners actually out there not being interested in having people come to the table as envisioned by the council. So, I'm perfectly happy with the visioning process moving forward. With that, we'll move into AB 16-064, study session to discuss Development Services Cost of Service and Fee Study. And we'll have Mike Delac, our Deputy Director, Community Development Director, oh, and Peter Moy, FCS Group.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. So, we're here tonight with Peter Moy from the FCS Group to bring forward about a two-year culmination of a process that we started. In October of 2013, we, we used the Latimer Group to do a series of focus groups with our Development Services customers. And they made a host of recommendations for improvements and one of those was to convert from the hourly billing fee to a flat fee. And the reason they cited was it brought a known to the development application process, they knew going in what kind of fees they'd be paying to go through their land use entitlements all the way through the construction as well. So, we started looking at it internally. We had just, unfortunately, we had just transitioned to the EnerGov permit tracking software system and so, the, the data from the old system was no longer being supported, the data in the new system, there wasn't a whole lot to glean from it. We quickly realized within a matter of a few months that we really needed someone with more expertise that specialized in, in fees and rate studies and could pull information from surrounding jurisdictions, et cetera, to help us. So, we brought the FCS Group in in June of 2014 and staff has been working with Peter and his group ever since. And so, tonight, Peter's going to bring forward his, his findings and present those for your consideration.
Thank you, Mike. So, as we went through this process, there was a, a lot of staff involvement and they really helped out and then we had some sort of, some transitions as Tom is here and then the building move and everything else like that. So, the process went a little bit longer than we anticipated. As we got through this, really, the objectives of the study was really, what, what is the cost of service and what is the city's cost recovery level? What should the city's desired cost recovery target should be? Basically, the, since you're on hourly charges, it's really, we'd expect that you get 100%, although that's not exactly what we found. When we talk about cost recovery, we're also talking about, is it feasible to set fees at the full cost when we're talking about fixed fees? Will increasing fees result in any compliance or public safety issues? As well as, can the market absorb any fee increases? And then finally, if you do make some adjustments, do, do these fees impact maybe other city goals that you might have? And so, those are just things to think about in terms of cost recovery. Based on what we did and the time that we spent, we then came out, well, what would the fixed fees be in terms of the full cost of service? And then lastly, how do these fees compare relative to other fees? And, and we picked these four different cities, Kirkland, Redmond, Kenmore, Woodenville, which are more of the local areas that you might actually have in terms of neighboring communities and somebody could build in Kirkland, they could build in Redmond instead of building in Bothell. Same with Kenmore and Woodenville. So, we picked those as the other comparative cities. So, let me just go over sort of our fee methodology. Our first step is really involving collecting all this data. And so, one of the things we do is we usually involve the staff and we ask and hold interviews and we say, well, what are the fee services? And those are usually pretty easy to identify because you have a number of listed permits and those are the permits that we look at. On top of that, we also ask, what are some of the non-fee services? So, oftentimes, there are services that are listed, aren't listed on there, but they are part of the permitting process and maybe you don't charge for that. So, we also asked, well, should there be a fee for that and let's see if we cost it out? Now, whether or not it gets passed forward, that's a different question, but at least we've identified perhaps what the, the cost might be for a new fee or a modified type fee. The other part and key part is really for fixed fees is to identify the times estimates. How long does it take somebody to process a permit and who's involved in processing those permits? So, we did a lot of work. First of all, we did sort of an overall level. We have sort of a macro kind of level which says, if you were a staff member, how did you spend your time in, in this case, it would've been 2013? How much time did you spend working on building type permits, current planning? And if you did other kinds of things, like if you were doing long-range planning, how much time did you spend there? So, we get a sort of sense that overall, this is how much time was being spent, an effort on these types of fee services as well as non-fee services. We also look and held different sort of staff focus groups to identify, well, if we take this single permit, how long does it take you to do this? And we did run into, we had some time data, as, as you mentioned, Mike mentioned, there was some transition in terms of the timekeeping systems and some other things that we found out about how time is kept. But we tried to get estimates of, if this is a, say, a variance, well, how long does it take you to process the average variance? And we're really talking, can we cover with this amount of time, say, 80 to 90% of the permits? Okay? Because there's always gonna be permits that maybe take longer for whatever reasons, they're more complicated, maybe the, the applicant didn't have as much information as they should've and so, you're going back for corrections and things like that. So, those are things that we worked with the staff and we held a number of different focus groups. And then there's just the rest of the budget part of the cost, the non-labor cost, you know, the facility costs, the utilities, any consultant-type cost, supplies, all those types of costs, we also try and work in to the, the equation as well as the labor cost and then any overhead cost. So, once we get all this data, we put it together and we make what we call these cost layers. And we say, here are direct services, which is, how much time did somebody actually spend looking at a permit? So, that's what we consider direct. When we talk about indirect services, that could include training, it could include just general administration. But one of the major things that we find in a lot of these different types of development agencies is that there's a lot of time for what we'd call public information and customer service. So, somebody walks into the permit center, they say, well, I'm thinking about doing this. What permits do I need? How do I need to do this? Or I'm thinking about changing and doing something for my land use permit, what do I need to do? And so, there's a lot of time being spent in terms of customer service oftentimes as to, here's what you need to do, here's the application, here's what, here's the, the things you need to bring back and, and that's part of the customer service process. The last parts are, we have department overhead, so we have, you know, the department director, we also have the managers and some of their administrative time just supervising all the people and we allocate those costs. And then the last one in certain, in certain cases, I don't think we had it for here, but in some cases where there's separate funds, we also have a city overhead cost, which is all the personnel costs, the, the finance cost, a lot of those kinds of costs that are added on top of the thing. So, we build these cost layers. And then finally, what we do then is figure out, based on hourly wages, who's working on it, what type of planner might be working on it, what the cost of an individual permit is. And in the report that, I think you have a draft at least, you'll see that we have a number of different types of permits and estimated how much it would, how much time it would take and also how much it would cost. And that could include the cost of a planner and it could include the cost of a, one of the permit techs spending time in putting the, the data and the permit into the systems and different inspectors doing different reviews. So, and so, once we have that, we've got most of the, the information to say, here's what it costs to provide those services. And so, the next part is really mostly policy. You know, how much do you want to recover? And based on our, the way we can do it, we can either do it at a program level, you could do it on a fee category, you could do it just on an individual fee basis or some other cost category. You could take, say, well, we don't need to recover the city overhead or the department overhead. So, those are a number of different options. And then, once you set that target cost recovery level, then we can say, okay, let's take a look at the permits and figure out what that fee would be. And so, that's generally how we do the, the fixed fee permits. With building, there's also a little bit more involved in that because they also get revenue, but it's not based on the amount of time it takes. They get it through what's called valuation and then they calculate what the fee is based on the valuation. So, it's a little bit different in terms of the different fees. I'm just gonna quickly go through some of these. These are sort of the, the idea of the cost layer. And so, you can see that we have what we call the sort of direct services for building and sort of these indirect services and then sort of the overheads that we've added on to that. And, and again, in this case, there was probably, what, what we would say, at least 53% of the cost is just providing that direct service, another 22, 21 is for those indirect support services and then another 26 is for the department overhead. So, what does that look like when we say, okay, here are the cost layers, here are the total revenues? And a couple notes about this. So, what this says is, at least in terms of all the building services that were provided, they took in more revenue necessarily than what it cost to do that. But in terms of building permits, what happens is somebody prepays the amount of their fee. And so, all the work might actually happen if somebody comes in for a large commercial building, they, they pay the permit fees December 31st, it might get booked or shown as, as revenue, but all the work is gonna happen the next year or several years after that. So, so that's one thing that we, we didn't look at exactly, we didn't identify. In other cases, we would identify what was the, sort of the unearned income or what was the carryover value of those permits. Also, it's, it is sort of a reflection of the economic activity. And in many of the cities that we do these building permits between 2013, 2014 and even this year, what we're seeing is at least building departments are ramping up because they've got much more money, there's much more building activity. And so, one of the things that we also can't tell you right now is, as part of this goes on in some of the places that we've done work, when they made, when the recession hit, they made a lot of cuts in the building department because it just wasn't, the activity wasn't coming in, but they hadn't hired back as much. And so, sometimes those things are identified more in the performance metrics. So, if you look at this and this was really busy time, that might mean that inspector takes a little bit longer to get out there, the plans need to be reviewed, they take a little bit longer to get, get to in some cases. So, that's just an example of some of the things that could happen and have happened in some of our other jurisdictions and clients that, in terms of the building funds.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, this is just a snapshot in 2013?
Yes.
We don't, we don't typically have a 207% cost recovery. It's just that's particular.
Yes.
No, and, and I can, I can speak to that real quickly. I looked at a couple of, you know, one, we had some big projects come in in 2013. I looked at the projects that came in in 2012 and 2013, Six Oaks, 104th Assemblage, two gateway buildings, a big University of Washington Science building. And if you look at the, the fees were paid in 2012 and 2013 and we didn't issue CBOs until 2014, 2015. So, they're basically, if you will, they're reserving capacity for inspection staff to, to go out and do the inspections throughout the life of that project while it's being under construction. So, it's not like the money comes in in 2013 and the work's done in 2015.
And it's not like we're printing money?
That's...
We were just talking about that earlier.
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, that's, that's correct.
Once we saw this increase, by the way...
Thank you very much. Once we saw this increase, staff was added as well because we saw what was coming and once those permits came in. So, there was, there's more going out now.
Right. And so, like, like I said, we did this in 2013 and we've had similar situations where mostly on the other, other side of the mountain where we had another client that, they, they looked like this, but that year, we were doing it 2015, 2014, we did the thing in 20, the study in 2015 and in the end of 2015, they were actually hiring people because they had let go inspectors and plan reviewers until the activity started going up again. And so, so that's one of the things that there's sort of a lag there usually in terms of being able to, to finance and things. So, if everything stopped today, but everybody that has a permit today kept on going and you didn't get any revenue, in theory, you would still have revenue and you'd be obligated to, to still process and do the inspections for that particular thing.
Can I have one other thing? Thank you.
He doesn't have a microphone anymore.
Nobody here.
He's just... He's just...
Also, please keep in mind in your quarterly reports to the council and to the public that go on the website from the finance department, there is also, there was always a net figure for development review and for permitting. So you know exactly where we are every single quarter. So you can see if there's a net positive or a net negative and you can see it over the year and over the biennium.
And so, and most of this revenue for the building is based on those valuation formulas. And so it doesn't really relate to exactly, whereas a fixed fee, we can say, oh, it took this much amount of time and this is how much it cost us to do that. With the, the way that the traditional and most building departments work, they have these valuation tables and then they have these, the fee schedules that they apply to those valuations.
You have a question?
Sure.
You said you added staff? Sorry, you didn't. We added staff?
We did.
I think we added one inspector.
We added one inspector, one plans examiner and a part-time permit.
And some admin, I believe, too. Is that correct?
I'm not sure.
Curious to see what this looks like every year, maybe for the last ten years, right? Because one-year snapshot doesn't give us the whole story. Curious to know if we're a hundred percent, two-hundred-and-seven percent over each year or not.
Yeah, typically, Tammy can probably speak to that better, but typically, prior to the recession, we seemed to be running pretty much even, right? And then, so then we had the spike coming out of the recession and the downtown taking off.
Yeah. It's normally a deficit.
Normally a deficit.
There's normally a deficit over a long period of time, yeah. Which is not really completely a bad thing because those are restricted monies and they have to be spent on that purpose and they're very hard to track. So that's why we track them in the accounting department to make sure that if we ever do see a positive that's not going to be spent like this one, where the next two years that's going to fund staffing, we need to make sure that those monies go back into another account and so on. So anyway, we watch it pretty close.
We need another plans examiner.
So, and, and like I said, there are a number of different jurisdictions or cities that are in counties that are exactly, have faced that issue. Once that recession hit and they started laying off people, the economic activity kicked in a lot quicker than, than they could actually hire staff. And everybody's being conservative too. They don't want to hire staff and then have to lay them off again. So there's a little bit of that lag. So in terms of the building fee issues, there are a couple of things that we talked about. One would be changing the plumbing and mechanical fees, partly maybe making some for same new single-family residential building permits, maybe for plumbing and mechanical, have a fixed fee for both new as well as addition and alterations. So rather than counting fixtures, there's just a set fee and says, if you're going to do a new single-family home, you're going to pay this for the plumbing and this for the mechanical. Also, fees are, might also be moved to, for commercial properties on the plumbing and mechanicals, maybe do something based on evaluation and build something similar to the way that other building permits are done. There are a couple of other cities that do it that way. Kirkland happens to be, they take plumbing and mechanical evaluations and they apply a fee schedule just like they do for the building permits. And then lastly, there were some potential adjustments to some of the fixed fees that we identified in terms of the cost of service. And so we've already answered and talked a little bit about this, because 2013 still represents the development activity occurring today and in the future. So I think that question has already been discussed a little bit. I think you need more information, I'm sure. I can tell you things are probably going on, you probably know that in your community, what's being developed and what's not, so compared to what it used to be. Couple of things on the comparisons, the mechanical base fee is on the lower end of the spectrum with only one city being less expensive. Of the remaining seven mechanical fees that we were able to compare, Bothell was the most expensive for the four of them and two of Bothell's fees were in the middle, one was, you know, less than any other couple of cities. Plumbing, same thing, base fee was a little bit low. All the plumbing fixture fees are the same or lower compared to the other jurisdictions. Current planning, this is a little bit different. You can see the, the cost layers are a little bit different. You can see that they spend a lot of time in terms of that public information and customer service area. And the actual direct service time was only relatively, roughly about a third compared to where it was about forty-something percent of the building area. In terms of cost recovery, cost recovery was about fifty percent. And actually, that's pretty good for a planning organization. I can tell you, recently, we've done about seven different cities and of those, only two were over twenty-five percent and one was as high as eighty-seven percent. But it was in a separate fund and they were told that they had to be self-sufficient. So their fees were much higher in that, in that sense. Whereas the under five, and it just happens that those two happen to be in Oregon, the ones that are in Washington that we're, we're doing now, which are all averaging about nineteen percent, between sixteen and twenty-three percent were the, yeah. So actually, it's pretty good in terms of, you know, what we see as planning agencies now. Whether or not that's the right number, you can see that at least you're covering your direct costs and some of the indirect costs. A couple of different things, one of the things is continue either with the hourly or transition to some fixed fees or use a combination where appropriate. And one of the thoughts would be is where there's lots of variance in terms of the time it takes or the, the complexity of a permit, that sometimes it's not easy to say, well, this is a fixed fee because there's too much variation. So for some of those, you might decide to say, we'll have a fixed fee because we know what you think the base cost is, but after that, we're not really too sure, so we might be charging hourly. For some that are fairly straightforward, you might say, okay, we know exactly, we do tons of these types of permits and it, it takes us exactly this amount of time and we can do a fixed fee for that. We tried to look at some of the past charges and because of the time data and some of the timekeeping issues, we've sort of had, on these particular four, just to give you an idea, we've sort of found that the average fee for like a boundary line adjustment type one was about six-hundred-and-thirty dollars, but when we actually talked to people in the staff, they said, well, it takes us about this amount of time and that came out to be about eight-hundred dollars. On some of the larger ones, like a conditionally used type three, you can see it's really about sixty percent on a SEPA, what they call SEPA-SEPA was really about, you know, six-hundred, seven-hundred dollars, but it cost about twelve-hundred dollars. And on the shoreline substantial development type permit, you know, it costs about seventeen-hundred bucks, but it rightly costs about nine-thousand to process and take care of. So those are just some of the examples. Again, as part of the next steps, we'll discuss how maybe some of these kinds of decisions will be made. And of plantings cost of service fees, type of full cost of service, on at least twenty-one that we could really compare, twelve are the highest compared to the other cities, five are in the middle, four were in the lowest, lower categories. But the one thing we don't know about the other cities is we don't know what their cost recovery level policy was. And so they may be subsidizing it, they may be doing other things, but we just compared at least what the full cost of service would be. So whether or not you want to be in the middle or how that, how that plays out, that's again a policy question. Any questions on planning permits? Engineering, we, we work with that. One of the things, just a note about this, was that the engineers seem to be very busy because they, that they didn't really have much admin time. So I think there's a page in the report where we talk about, that's one reason why their hourly rate seems a little bit lower than what we would have anticipated or what's being, what was calculated for 2013. They're doing pretty well, as you can see, they're more like at a hundred-and-seventeen percent cost recovery. Again, it doesn't include citywide overhead, so if you added some of that to it, it would probably be pretty, pretty close to be at break-even. What were some of the issues in terms of the engineering? Well, again, for, for fixed fees, we had to really, we worked with a lot of the staff on a number of different meetings trying to figure out what would be new fee, new fee categories. Because it was relatively easy for them to work on a project and charge time, but it might have been the same permit, you know, because we had to break it down, was it grading? Was it, was it clearing? Was it, you know, something else, a utility permit? In the end, the, whoever the developer was or the applicant, they were still paying the same amount. So one of the things that we had to try and get a little better handle on was how to do the timekeeping and try and make some estimates. And again, we worked with Don's staff to try and come up with some of these other categories. And again, when we started looking at other jurisdictions, the full cost of service again, those fees generally appeared more expensive than other cities. But again, in the public works area, it's really hard and the way your permit categories work, it's very hard to make comparisons in terms of some of those types of engineering type permits. And so we did the best we could, but it's very difficult with engineering. But as you can see, the engineering permits are, look like they pay for themselves. The last one we did was fire. These percentages aren't really right, correct? Part of the draft, we were going to begin to correct those, so. But again, a lot of their time is spent direct service, almost half, and the percentages really should be a little bit different. They actually ought to be forty-six direct, thirty indirect, and twenty-four overhead. When we took a look at their fees, they're pretty close to cost recovery. Now, one of the things that they have, because they do participate in plan reviews, they charge a separate fee for that. And so over half this revenue is related to not a fixed fee, but a charge on a per square foot basis that they charge for reviewing plans. And so half the fees were there. So the other half is really related to the different kinds of sprinkler alarms, those kinds of, different types of fixed fees. But again, they're pretty close to be recovering their costs. One of the key issues when we looked at that, we had roughly ten fire fees that we could compare, and of the current fees that you have compared to the other jurisdictions, Bothell's fees were lowest for seven out of the ten. So, and when you look in the report, you can find that a lot of those fees, for those fixed fees, actually should be a lot higher. And again, but most of that revenue they get is really coming from the plan review revenue, it's not coming from these individual fixed fees. So what are the next steps? We put something together and maybe Mike might want to talk a little bit about it, but one, determine the fixed fees based on the, whatever the city's council's target recovery level. You may or may not be able to say, yes, we want to do X today, but maybe there's a range that you could provide and give them some guidance. Once they have that guidance, then, then we've identified the fees that might be fixed and also those that might have hourly charges and trying to peg that number to the target cost recovery level. And then the next part would be, and again, this might be for the budget coming up, you know, identify revenue estimates for 2017 if you went to this new fixed fee charging method. As part of that, and looking at some of the processes and everything else, one of the things too, we identified was, there might be, need to be some clarification on changes. And for example, if they take in plans or something and there's continual correction cycles or continual mis-inspections and so you have to keep on going out there, well, one of the things that we talked about was having that re-inspection fee or that sort of corrections fee. So you're given maybe two or three chances to fix things and then after that, we're going to start charging you for every other correction that you need to make if it's not the city's fault, you know, they've given you all the guidance. And so one of the things that we would suggest is that the, obviously the director would have some discretion in determining whether or not that should be charged or not charged. That would be one method of doing it. The other part two is just to make sure when permits, applications are submitted, that, that they're complete and you do sort of a completeness review to make sure everything is, is put together before accepting an application. And then finally, whatever changes come about, or whatever the new fees might be, then obviously the, those changes would be needed by you by yourselves in terms of what one might have. So I don't know whether that would be during the budget process or whether prior to that, so I don't know.
Maybe there'd probably be a little bit of both. One of the things, it's, the permit tracking software is going to take a considerable amount of data updates to put different fee tables and rates in for all the different various permit types we have. So our IT folks have already told us that you need to spend some of the time to accomplish that. Once the, once that's, the strategies have been decided and the fees have been set, then they're going to take some time to, 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 so.
Have they given you an idea of how much time?
You know, probably a couple, three months. Joe, Joe's happens to be, Mr. Sherman's in the audience, he might be able to answer that question.
It depends on the depth of the changes. So if recommendations is a minimal amount of flat fees per improvement, I think the report talked about basically almost like twenty-seven of them. We looked at about eighty hours of staff time. But if you start really going down the rabbit hole of changing a lot of fees and then also keeping the evaluation fee as a add-on, it really starts changing the whole data process. And we might actually extensively have to go back and start the system from scratch to redo the new flow. Because the flow of the workflow and the data structure was built on the previous system. So matters how much changes are made. So that's something to keep in mind is, if you go too extensive, it could really start adding.
So we're open for, open for questions? That's sort of our presentation.
And just so you know, that, that wireless mics are not needed, they're really needed just for the audience and with the staff. And so this mic is back on now. If you can hear each other, then VCTV can hear you.
So, couple of questions. If we were to set a policy that we want a hundred percent cost recovery for direct and direct overhead costs, is that going to impact what IT is going to need to do to update the system?
Yes, yes and no. It's really going to be the methodology and how we get the, when we went, when we went back years ago to when we transitioned to flat fees to development review, building hours, the council's had times direction of staff was they wanted us to recover a hundred percent of the cost of, recognizing that, as Peter talked about, that, you know, planners and building plans examiners and others spend time at the counter helping customers and answering questions, obviously they can't build for those, for those hours. But the time was actually spent working on projects, they wanted it to be a hundred percent self, self-recovery. So it's, it's really a matter of what the direction of the council is, if they want a hundred percent, ninety percent, eight percent, or whatever that number is. And then how we get there, the methodology we get there, as Joe spoke to, there's a lot of fees, a lot of permit types right now that we don't have any fees and then we just, we just build. And then there are like building fees that we, it's all based on valuation and plumbing fees is based on a per appliance or per fixture. So it depends on how wholesale the changes are and, and what the direction of the council to us to accomplish is.
The, the other thing too is, it's probably on the building side, it should, there's already fixed fees already from the cannot plan plumbing, there's already valuation part and that's probably most of the, the way the fee revenue comes in. On planning and engineering, there are a lot of different types of fee categories that have to be updated. But the real key to this is you have to look at where the volume is because it makes sense to have full cost recovery on those that are, get you a lot of volume. If you have a fee only once a year, or a permit that only comes in once a year, no matter how, you might just keep that as a, an hourly in time in there. But those that are, that come in regularly and you can really identify how much that is and you have lots of them, that's where you're going to get the larger revenue gain. Changing a fee, you know, a fee, even if you double the fee for a permit that you only get once a year, you know, it's not really going to have much of a revenue impact. So it's, those are the things too that we need to look at. We do have some volumes, it's just a matter of double check and see, is that the right fee to raise and what's the correct now?
And then is the upper limit on the fees that we charge really based on how competitive we want to be with our neighborhood jurisdictions? There's no legal limit. So like there is with traffic impact fees, we can't just charge as much as we want for traffic impact fees. It has to be related to a specific program. Are we limited in that way of charging?
For all fees, yes you are, especially building fees. There have been a number of suit lawsuits that have gone either way, that say, and RCD has it very specific about the, the fees, you recover only the cost. Now, what they consider as part of the cost that's still Now, what they consider as part of the cost, that's still not real clear sometimes. So, but in general, anytime you have a user fee, it's, the fee is supposed to just cover the cost of the joint.
So, we wouldn't set a policy, set cost recovery at, say, a hundred and ten percent to bank for some deficiency in the future. We could only, we could only set a policy to cost recovery a hundred percent. We just need to decide what those costs are, or we want to cover, whether it's direct and direct overhead.
That would be the base fee. In other places, they have surcharges, well, like other technology surcharge. So, that money is being banked to help pay for new technologies. Other places, they have, once they decide and determine how much is the prepaid liability, there's also, if they have a different way of doing things, then they'd also, they might have like a core staffing, like a preserver. So, if there is a downturn, you'd be able to support staff for a little bit longer. Obviously, if you were in recession a few years ago, you still would make a pact. But sort of the temporary kinds of ups and downs, there's, you know, that's another kind of surcharge that's been used by other jurisdictions.
Well, I'll just say that I'm in support of a hundred percent, a hundred percent for the cost recovery. Because we just had discussions about how expensive personnel are and wouldn't we want to cover the costs of our personnel's time through a fee system? So, and I think when we talk about what our costs are, I think an indirect cost, like you described, speaking with somebody at the counter about what steps they need to take for to a permit, is just as important as running through the checklist of a permit that comes in. And that's still a cost of development. So, that's why I like the idea of having cost recovery of the indirect costs as well. And if we do overhead costs without, without being so out of line with our neighboring jurisdictions, I think, I think that, that is a goal. Now, and you kind of asked where, that we want to do, you know, fee-based or valuation-based. And for me, that kind of is just getting into the weeds of things. And all I'm thinking is, you know, make the changes that are going to get us to the full cost recovery, minimize the impact on IT time, focus on the high-volume issues. And if the easy, if the low-volume issues are easy enough to tweak, like for example, shoreline development, we're covering eighteen percent of the cost of that. I don't imagine we probably do a lot of shoreline development permits. But if it's easy enough to change that, then that seems to be, you know, a win-win situation. So, I guess, does that, does that make sense? That, I mean, I know that you live and breathe these fees. And for me, I feel a little lost in that.
Any bills?
Yeah. What is our, the, our surcharge?
Is five percent.
Five percent of the total bill?
Five percent of total.
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of total intake then?
Yes. Yeah, for that, for that year, that would be about two hundred and fifty thousand.
And how many people, staff, just community development? Or overseeing or?
For my, for IT support.
Yeah, IT support, thank you.
Well, it's actually, it's earmarked for two things. One, a portion of it goes to the ECGO for our alliance membership. We're not partners, we are subscribers to subscribers. Thank you. For the MVP portal. And then the remainder of it is to pay for Joe's work to support the technology. So, computer, software, mobile devices.
Did you look at, are we a hundred percent on that?
For, we didn't look at that.
Yeah.
In some places where they haven't had a surcharge like that, we've done that. You know, some, like you get a new permit system, you know, if it costs a couple hundred thousand, you know, maybe you want to get, over five years, you can replace it then, you know, if you want to try and collect, you know, a certain amount every year. And then calculate what you've got, your estimated revenues would be, come up with a percentage. That's why it's a surcharge, at least you can raise up or down depending on what your anticipate is going to happen.
Yeah. But I think that's a very important charge that we're implementing that we should consider reassessing. I am a hundred percent favor of like a lump sum fee as in many cases as possible because that gives certainty to the investment community that's coming in here to understand that they're actually going to be charged and charged. I'm sure Mike, that you look at those bills and you smile as you send them to me in the mail. Just kidding. We have amazing staff here at Boffel. But it would be nice to have a full understanding, like with some, which kind of you go up there and, you know, if you're going to apply for a house, it's like the five thousand dollar fee or whatever, it's lump sum fee. So, if the city is able, their county is able to get through that review. Good for them if it takes a little bit longer, which it sometimes does, it does. But hopefully, we get a hundred percent at the end of the year. So, hopefully, we can move forward with a lump sum fee as many cases as possible rather than an hourly look at. So, there's certainty on both sides really. But let's really make sure that we're charging an appropriate technology fee. Because if we can be far more digital in the field, plans examiner, not plans examiner, but your building inspectors go out and they have one of those iPad Pros or whatever these things are, service at hand to be able to look at the plans or... I know they're supposed to be provided on-site, but it's nice for them to be able to walk through the building and be able to scan through and see exactly. If we can equip them, it just helps them to be able to do their job a little bit more in that tech fee. And again, investors who are building buildings or small ADUs are going to benefit.
Right. And just to be clear, the tech fee is not just earmarked for the building fees. That's earmarked for all the building review fees. So, all the hourly bills for planning, engineering staff, those are also going to five percent. That's all it is.
Can I ask, is that, I assume, but maybe I'm wrong, that there's some sort of efficiency in that?
There's, yes, there's a, there's a huge gain in the community development admin folks. There's, there's two things that we're working on right now. One is online inspections capabilities. Right now, we have an admin person spending about three hours a day scheduling inspections, taking off the recorder, creating the report, copying the report, emailing the report. And the other is the amount of time on the first of the month that they spend going through all of the hours from all the staff, the builder hours, and creating invoices, mailing out invoices, tracking them. So, those are huge, huge time gains for staff.
So, I would agree with both of you, with council members' comments. I don't know if it's, how easy it would be to get to a hundred percent on certainly being able to get as close to a hundred percent that we're since. And see if, yeah, we lose some kind of success in that direction. And the second, nine thousand dollars, nine thousand dollars.
Sure, sure, like, sure, like.
So, I mean, we're, obviously, we're those things that make sense. I don't know how to weigh, when Joe says rebuilding the system versus says a hundred percent of recovery. But I'd like to be over the numbers of overheads.
Agree? Try to get as close to recovery as we can. Try to be best comparable to some of the other cities so we don't, do not be most expensive. So, people will go elsewhere.
Just to clarify, when council's talking about close to recovery, you're talking about indirect, direct, as well as overhead?
Okay. I would agree with Councilmember Regno and others that while being in the middle of competitive, this recovers as much of our costs as we can. And then I did have a question on, if plans are submitted, there's markups.
Right.
And then corrections. That would be, you know, you give them one or two to fix the markups that were generated the first time. But if there's other markups that come later, those get a separate one or two, correct?
Well, that's where the sort of the question comes in. If it's a new markup, if somebody didn't catch the first time, I would think you'd allow them to, another opportunity.
I think that's what Peter was implying when he said, it's not the city's fault and if given the third direction we can, you know, it's all the directions we're giving them.
Yeah, I fix everything you tell me and then all of a sudden, they come back with new markups. Like, well, gosh dang, why weren't these done the first time? So, okay. And then, do you, do you find that having a fixed fee, anecdotally, things process quicker?
Well, I think we just talked about that. If you don't have a fixed fee and somebody's got to record their time and you've got loaded hourly rates and all this other stuff that you've got to take into consideration, somebody's, and somebody's got to bill it, somebody's got to receive it. You know, overall, that cost is a lot more. Where in general, if they have no the fixed fee, they walk in, they hand you the check and you're, it's just counted as cash and it goes to your bank, you know? And if...
But then, from the review standpoint, do you find that, you know, the actual reviews are getting done quicker?
I don't know that they're getting quicker. We haven't ever looked at that. We usually look at what it costs to do that. And in some cases, many building departments and other places have gone through this lean process to look at the processes and identify where, you know, things can be done a little bit more efficiently or some reviews may be done simultaneously or things like that or concurrently. So, but we didn't, we didn't look at that and wasn't very careful.
Certainly, there are efficiencies to be gained. I mean, I can certainly talk to the building planners that spend. And we look at a large commercial structure and they can spend the better part of an hour to try and figure out how many plumbing fixtures are going in and how many appliances are going in, counting them up and looking at the fee table and figuring out what the fees are owed versus just saying it's, you know, it's two percent of the overall project you pay for plumbing and mechanical and AP permits. And they're done with it, they're all under the accounting stuff, they're focusing on natural technical difficulties and getting things off the desk after. So, certainly in that manner, there would be efficiencies gained by going to an easier platform.
Right. And that's one reason why, at least in some cases, for like the new residential, the single-family residential on the plumbing mechanical permits was to do it based on either having just a fixed fee for that because in general, you know, there's a certain house, a new house is going to have so many bathrooms, you know, and so many sinks and things that the marginal difference between whether three fixtures or four fixtures wasn't going to make a big difference. So, the staff felt that maybe they get to say, okay, here's the number of inspections. And actually, we actually went and identified the number of inspections per, per type of structure. So, so we have a good sense of how many actual average inspections it takes to do certain things.
Okay, thank you. Me, I'm last.
Well, I haven't done it, but you'll be good. I can go.
No, I'll go there, I'll go there. So, I'm definitely in support of a hundred percent. And at the same time, I think fixed fee dealing with different municipalities on a level, the day-to-day level, myself personally, those fixed fees processes do streamline, make it much, much easier, especially for the person who's wanting to apply for those fees and understanding what they're going to be. And I think for city staff, I've seen in other municipalities what helps that as well. You know, I agree with the previous comments about the processes in the field and making sure that the inspectors that are in the field have the tools to make their job much easier. And having that access, my building increment was a good step in the right direction. And then having software internally that's going to allow us to streamline things is very important as well. So, I'm all for it as long as we're paying for it. One of the things I didn't understand is, is Councilmember Sandberg asked a question about a hundred percent. And looking ahead, if we say a hundred percent, then we really want to put a reserve in and maybe say we want a hundred and ten percent to make sure we're covering anything that we're not seeing.
Well, I think the goal is usually a hundred percent. And some of those, like I said, the reserves you have for tech reserves or some of things like that, is really sort of a, you know, part of it, on the building side, it's a little bit easier. But you have economic ups and downs and you have different kinds of permits. So, again, part of it is really forecasting the budget product and the project process, what do you think your revenues are going to be on the permit, especially on the planning side and on the engineering side. So, that's really the key part is to whether or not, for example, in 2013, if we had X number of variance requests or X number of utility type permits, do we expect that to happen again in the next year? So, that's where there's going to be some variation as part of that. But I don't know that we can say, well, we should recover more. But I think that's really something that policies, maybe these guys need to look at a little bit closer.
Yeah, because that snapshot showing two hundred and seven percent without one specific period, but it was split out over fourteen, fifteen, possibly sixteen. Doesn't really give us a true picture of where we are to say, yeah, we are at a hundred percent.
Right. So, I think, you know, as already said, you can, you already have some of that information and it's being put out in the monthly reports to see where you are. Again, we took that snapshot, we didn't necessarily say of this permit revenue, how much of it was quote carried over into the next year. It could be very well, especially given the size of the projects during 2013 that were happening, which are public parts of this building, parts across the street there, all that development was happening. So, there was a lot of permit revenue coming in. We just didn't, at the time, we didn't say, oh, of that, there were too many dollars, whatever, how much of that was carried over into 2014, you know? And then even some of it's carried over into 2015. So, but that would be a process that you're going to do. You're already sort of doing that already. So, it's just a matter of at the end of the year, seeing where you are relative to those permits. So, you know how much revenue you took in and at the same time, you'll know sort of where you are in terms of what you're sort of earning. And you have a snapshot of like a ten year span or something?
Yeah, it's, it's in the quarterly report that's sent to the council. It's on the back page. Actually, you probably look at it electronically, but yeah, it's just, there's a number. It is permitting and then development review and it'll show a plus or minus figure for the year, year-to-date. More than likely compared to from the last year.
And that's a quarterly report?
Uh huh, and those reports are out there since, or 2000 and something. So, you can go back and look at each one. Yeah. And I'll take this opportunity to remind everybody to please look at those reports. They're very interesting and informative. There's a lot of good information there at least.
And you know, one of the things about this particular apartment is it's one of the few in the city that's really related to how the economy's going in terms of activity and how the revenue comes in. So, that's the other thing. When development's happening really well, you know, you're going to see more revenues come in perhaps than staffing maybe to see how, we need to staff up or staff down. You know, it just depends on how the economy's going. Whereas most other services, and typically, just like you were saying with fire, regardless of what the economy is, you're still going to have, go out and do the UMS calls and things like that. Whereas in this particular apartment, you're going to have ups and downs in terms of the revenue that occur in the staffing.
Well, that leads me to another question. So, do we, does the city contract out services for review and things like that?
We do. We have consultants on, on contract right now. Does, in fact, he does all the big stuff. This firm does all the big stuff, the structure reviews. And then when we got caught with this current title wave, we started letting all of our employees to use those services for a fee, to send those, to send those out to them as well.
And that would be the same hundred percent recovery?
Yes. But technically, technically, we try to do the work in-house and just send the larger structural.
Yeah, there are some cities that have what they call expedited review. So, if you think you want yours faster, you're willing, you're willing to pay extra overtime and everything else to get it, then that's the extra fee to pay. So, at least the city is not losing money to expedite your fee. If you, if they have to pay overtime, your applicant's going to foot the bill for all that extra just to get it quicker.
And we have that process?
We don't, we don't have that process.
But some, certainly this guy's...
Are we looking at that process?
Well, we certainly can. The only, the only reluctance I have toward it is what I've found in the past is we budget for overtime, that gets expended fairly quickly. Staff gets burned out, it's awfully hard to tell somebody that's been already working overtime and, you know, if they're willing to pay you to come in working. So, it comes down to how much is your staff willing to work five, six, seven days after a month versus, you know, having a family in life. So, that's, that's part of the problem is how much, how much overtime does staff want to work?
But we have... But could that be contracted out for contract?
Well, it could be, it could be certainly, yeah.
So, because I've heard council, our deputy mayor, Dour, say that we have an issue... So, because I've heard council or Deputy Mayor Dorr say that we have an issue with TIs and the timeframe it takes to do TIs.
We, we have in the past, we have absolutely have, we were, we were doing well and then weren't doing well. And now, right now, today, the guys are pulling plans in the drawer that were at a due date of April 11th. So we are like one day behind our target today.
Oh, well, okay.
So we've made, we've made some marketing plans.
Thank you, then, reached out.
I just have one other comment. And sometimes you pay expedited in the morning. Not necessarily.
Not, not your, she said.
A different, a different opinion is happening. But it does happen because if, if you're, if you're giving it out or consulting it out, sometimes happens.
I think we feel that. You got your direction, do you?
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, I.
Can I come with you?
We're over two hours beyond our budgeted time and I have to relieve somebody very extra early tomorrow. So I'm going to have to bug out, take some rest. I think I should.
Now, you can make an excuse to, or a reason to the Deputy Mayor, bug out yourself also.
Well, Doug's pretty quick.
And he's always lying long.
Yeah.
Move to 10, 10, 15.
You want me to stay?
I'll, I'll vote in favor of moving or extending till 10, 15, raise your hand.
Okay.
We're extending to 10, 15 dollars.
Why is that with the last, it's not fair?
So this is AB 169065, study session regarding reciprocal transportation mitigation. A little background, prior to February of 2006, the city of Bothell did not have the authority to collect transportation mitigation and impact fees from developments that take place in the unincorporated area of Snohomish County. And in February of 2006, council approved an interlocal agreement with the county that expired at the end of last year. Little background also, in 2015, the city collected over $800,000 in transportation mitigation fees from unincorporated Snohomish County developments. So the purpose of the ILA is for the city to have a legally defendable process for the authority to review all projects within the areas noted on attachment to the map in your agenda packet. The agreement is based on the principle that trips generated from the development projects outside the city limits will impact Bothell's transportation network and therefore these impacts need to be mitigated. The ILA also provides a similar process for projects that are proposed for developments within the city that affect Snohomish County road system. City staff worked with Snohomish County staff on the new ILA. There aren't any major changes compared to the previous ILA. This is the map, and you see if you go, like a county project that's further out, the impact is a lesser percentage on the city streets, on the city, excuse me, on the city roads and vice versa. Over here in the city area that's farther away from the county, it's a less, lesser percentage impact. These, these percentages were worked out by the transportation experts 10 years ago when they created the ILA. Some questions that were submitted from the council. We just got answers from, how much revenue has the city received from county developments since the ILA was instituted in 2006? And that answer is $2.25 million. Almost a, over a third of that was received just last year. We had received, it is a banner year for development, obviously in Bothell, and we received $846,000, which that was county developments, actually, that unincorporated county development was a banner year for them too. How much money was spent on Snohomish County road projects in 2015? This is money we used on capital projects, not grant, grants, but the local money, and it was $246,000. How much revenue has this county received from city developments since the ILA was instituted? Quite a bit less than what we're getting on the other end, only $171,000 and only $13,000 last year. Is there a possibility of a park mitigation fee ILA with other municipalities? And I did share this with John Pease. The answer is perhaps, but there doesn't appear to be much of a precedent that, i.e., we have, we can't find any other jurisdictions that are doing this kind of thing. And it would require a mutual agreement. Both parties have to agree to do this, just like Snohomish County and Bothell are agreeing to do this ILA. It would probably also be very difficult to estimate outside user impacts. It's much easier with transportation. And of course, opens up the city development impacts on outside city limit parks. So if we did this, for instance, with Snohomish County, our city developments would have to pay towards it as well, just as they do with the transportation ILA. Has there been any transportation safety mitigation compensation as is referred to in the ILA? No, there hasn't been up to date. It's, it's a provision in case that kind of thing were to be pertinent to a situation. But it hasn't happened in the past. That's all I have for my presentation. There's no action required tonight. Take council questions and comments and the ILA will come back for approval next week.
Any questions?
Any difference in this ILA from the 2006 ILA?
No, no, nothing significant. They streamlined it some, the worksheets were changed, there was some very minor stuff, but nothing significant as far as the way it can calculate it out.
And so we seem to be getting an inflow of impact fees net over the outflow of impact fees?
Significant, yeah, it's over 10 times as much.
And those, that map that you showed, the percentages, you said those percentages were determined by transportation planners 10 years ago?
Yes, they feel it's still pertinent.
They still, they feel they supply. And then, so on the question about we received about $800,000 in 2015, but we spent about 246.
$246,000, so they need to keep that, keep track of that and make sure we're.
So is the, is the plan then to use those, those impact fees from Snohomish County on more of Snohomish County road projects? Are there not capacity increasing projects in this Snohomish County area that we're not able to apply that money to?
Well, it's, a lot of these are big projects, take years to plan and years to, you know, so you can't do it in the same year that you collect, but that's a big part of the problem.
And it's the same list, the traffic impact fee list is the same for this ILA as it is for our impact fee.
Any other questions?
Yeah. So there was a, there was $846,000. What was the total we spent, $246,000 in Snohomish County?
Yeah, this past, in, in 2015.
Right, so $600,000 worth of that.
Well, we keep track of it and, and our impact fees even go to any project throughout, throughout the city, actually. So we have a, we have a citywide area that's of influence as far as the impact fees. They don't have to go to a, like if you have a development in a certain area of Bothell, if you go to any area, your impact fees can go to any of the major capacity projects throughout the city.
Okay, so we're, we're getting this from Snohomish County and we're spending it throughout Bothell.
Yeah, we do, we keep track of the, we keep track of it though to make sure it's being spent appropriately. I might get more detail on it if you wanted, I can bring that next week.
Yeah, I would definitely like to see that. And then how does that, $600,000, how can that affect, or how does that help us? When we're talking about streets and sidewalks and.
Well, these are only for capacity projects, so projects that are affecting growth, that, they're only allowed to fund those type projects, they're not allowed to fund like overlays or the maintenance operations and that kind of thing that we were talking about earlier this time.
But like you could fund like capacity improvements on 228?
228, so that was something.
And we have been doing projects out in Snohomish County area, but they've been largely grant funded. So like the Bothell River Highway whitening was largely grant funded. The 228 Bothell River Highway intersection improvement we're doing now, largely grant funded. So a lot of the projects that we have currently on our list.
And that $246,000 was for a project that cost, the actual cost of the whole project was something like 1.2 million. And it was only $246,000 in local fees and the rest of it was all grants.
Does CFP also allocate these monies? And so it's, it's very clear where they're being spent and how they're being used and the projects that they're allowed to be used for. So and some of it's for debt service and some of it is to basically match grants. So we basically leverage it as best we can to get the most out of it.
I just, I think it would be good to understand as a whole where we bring money in or we put money in. And I'm not saying we don't do that, I'm saying, I'm asking these questions because I don't quite understand yet. And for me, when I talk to people in the community, I would say, oh yeah, we get $800,000 from Snohomish County. And the first question that's going to probably come to us is, do you spend that in Snohomish County? So it's good for us to understand here kind of how this money can be spent, where it's being spent.
It's, it, the money they're spending though is for their impacts on our roads. So that's throughout the city, our city. So it's not, it doesn't have to be, it's not at all really for Snohomish County roads, it's for roads, roads in Bothell. The, the trips are coming from Snohomish County and coming into Bothell.
Maybe there's some.
You'll be able to see that in the CFP, I'm sure, so we'll see all that too.
That, that's part of the committee who stopped talking about that.
Tom, is there an opportunity to move up there, creek line over to Highway nine?
Oh, it's.
Because the.
Oh, I, oh, you're, yeah.
Because that's where the majority of the Snohomish County development is going to be taking place in the next 10 years. Is between that Bear Creek line and Highway nine.
Really?
That's where the new high school is, that's where the Jewel subdivision is and all the development that's designated on each side of that road.
So you want to make that county area 30% size bigger?
Yes, over to Highway nine.
Okay, can we do that?
That's the only change.
I guess it's possible, but we actually just, it took, it took several months to get this. It's where we're at, but I, I don't, the county would have to be, I mean, this is a mutual agreement.
They don't know who they're dealing with. It's utility land.
They would know it.
That's a big.
Down there, so.
Yes.
Did you look at that, Russell?
All right, any other questions?
Thank you.
Any other things? The council committee reports. Executive sessions. All right.
Agreements.
They don't know who they're dealing with. It's utility land.
They would know it.
That's a big.
Down there, so.
Yes.
Did you look at that, Russell?
All right, any other questions?
Thank you.
Any other things? Council committee reports. Executive sessions. All right. You know, any. And second, all of your favors, present. Sure.